Just run and close the door. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, March 25th. It's 5:00 p.m. We have our first appointment, which is a Verizon pole hearing. Donald Vonner is here to represent Verizon. Verizon's request is to place a pole on the west side of Conway Street to allow them to move existing overhead wires out of the way of vehicle traffic. Anthony is also working with them to move a pole and wires that impact highways plowing activities. Good evening, Don.
Good evening. Normally I introduce myself, but you did such a good job. You even pronounced my last name right, so thank you. So I trust everybody has a plan in front of them, looks something like this.
Next, the next section.
Okay, thank you.
So I just walked over there, it's right around the corner, and took the measurements. The stake, somebody snapped the stake off, but it is still there. Measurements are pretty spot on as you, as it looks here. The, the, the purpose for this pole that I was given was to move the overhead wires because if you look at where they are currently, they overhang the, the drive. And there's some pretty big trucks, I noticed already that were going through there. So it's going to get the wires off the roadway, off eighteen feet plus over the roadway and then off to the side.
So you're just changing for high taller poles?
Uh, it probably will be an inline pole. It's a pretty new pole right next to it, so it'll probably be, I, I'm not gonna, it's either a forty or forty-five. I'm not sure what it is. And that is my introduction. Oh, I can give you more. I did speak with Anthony. I believe it was at his request. He, he told me which pole he was looking to move, but I, I didn't get the number from him in time. I did relay the information to the Verizon Right Away Manager. But I now have the pole number, so I will bring that back with me.
Is that another one on Conway Street?
It is the next one up. It's the only one that's in the sidewalk right now. So I, I need to figure out, I need to speak with him to determine why it needs to move. Because I, I thought it might be ADA, but it looks like there's enough room there for a wheelchair to go through. But I'm not sure, there's might be other reasons.
I think that there's something that it clips the wing plow. When he's, when he's plowing, it's interfering with plowing services. So I believe it was the wires themselves. There may, there might be, is there a, a guide wire?
There, I didn't check to see if there's any guy wires off of it, but there are some big silver cable wires that come from underneath the box and, but they don't go into the street. They go into the sidewalk area.
I wonder if it's for cleaning the sidewalks. So, because they, they do have a machine, big snowblower.
Oh, blows it over into the river.
So it's a tractor with a snowblower set up.
Probably wider than thirty-nine inches, which would be handicapped accessible or you could get by, but I think it's wider than that.
Okay. All right, I, I still need to follow up with Anthony, but I did gather pictures and information that I can bring back with me.
Appreciate that you do that.
Sure.
You guys have any questions?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to place one jointly owned pole numbered T thirteen and a half over E seventeen M on the west side of Conway Street at a point approximately there at three hundred and thirty-eight feet southerly from the center line of Asheville Street and fifty-seven feet southerly of the existing pole, T thirteen over eighteen. And ninety-three feet northerly of existing pole, T fourteen over seventeen.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good trip.
So we are a few minutes early, but Linda's here, so I think we'll just keep on marching here and move into our CDBG program amendment with Linda Overing.
Well, I'm, I'm here, I guess, because of two things going on with the grant. Is one that we have a grant that's, they call it FY twenty-two, twenty-three. It's the grant that paid for the Depot Freight Parking Yard improvements and ongoing support for the food pantry. And that grant runs until the original end date, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And we have, we had a lot of money leftovers, you remember, from Depot Street. And so we reprogrammed that to the Avery Road Repair Project. We still have money left over. So I, at this point, I believe Heather's talked to you a little bit, some ideas we have what to do with that extra money is over a hundred thousand dollars. And some of it is looking at maybe doing some engineering design work for future CDBG projects. But we have to work with HLC, the, the grant funder, to determine whether eligible projects. And we're still trying to do that. But I know also at the same time, you've been having discussions with Community Action Pioneer Valley about additional support for the food pantry. Because with this grant currently ending in June, they don't have any money coming from either Shelburne and Buckland. And I understand that there's been discussions and each town is finding resources for like additional twenty thousand dollar contribution that would go, so allow them to continue services at Shelburne beyond the end of June.
I don't think it would be additional. I think we used the last CDBG funding for the housing and development.
No, it's a different grant. This is, so we're, that's a, your housing development is a whole different grant than this one I'm talking about. So there's money available in the current grant that could go towards, you'd be used to as your twenty thousand dollar contribution. I understood that you've talked to them.
We weren't going to have it from the other one because it was all going through the housing.
Through the housing.
Right, right.
So we had talked about maybe using some of the reimbursement funds that we received back from the housing, from former housing rehab projects. We have what they refer to as program income available. And we had talked about using some of those funds. However, if there's money in the FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Funds that will actually exceed what we had originally talked about being able to provide to the, to the food pantry. And theoretically, it could be done sooner than if we go through our town, town meeting process. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would certainly be my recommendation, and, and I think Linda has prepared motions to the same, that we use twenty thousand dollars, I think is the number that we confirmed. It, it's the same amount of money that Shelburne will be appropriating as well. And that would cover the FY, because I think they had said that they were, I think Community Action had said that they were okay funding wise through September. And this would get them some funds a little sooner than that and hopefully get us into the following fiscal year.
So I think that, that's my understanding, this would take, we could ask to have the grant extended to the end of December of two thousand twenty-five and then, and then amend their contract to give them an additional twenty thousand. And they would spend it sometime in between that. They balance numerous funding sources and some of them have dates that end like at the end of the federal fiscal year. So that would be up to them. But I think it would meet your twenty thousand dollar commitment for additional funding to continue their operation beyond the end of June.
Right.
And then would be back to you again if we find something HLC will approve to do with additional money we still have left in this grant. So it's a two-part process when we do this request to them. We have to, first, I'm going to recommend we ask them to extend the grant to the end of December. And once they've approved that, then come back and say, now we, we want to use the twenty thousand that's sitting here surplus for this project. So that's why I've kind of got this very long motion here, many parts, but it's kind of a, we, the way the bureaucracy works at HLC, it's a multi-step process, I can't just go in. They are aware that I was coming to the board with this and that there seems to be no issue with them, with this twenty thousand.
Yep.
What will happen in the future regarding? More money, you know, the town contributing to the food pantry.
So, so, um, once the FY twenty-two, twenty-three grant is depleted, which we're working diligently towards that, towards that process, we have notified the Community Action, the, the West County Food Pantry that we are not seeking any new CDBG grants for construction slash social services. So there will not be any grant funds that would be available to Community Action from the Town of Buckland for the foreseeable future. We do have that housing rehab reimbursement fund that we have available to us in that should town meeting wish to appropriate an additional ten or twenty thousand dollars for FY twenty-seven, that is available to the town. But we have made no, no commitments to any sort of grant application or grant funding to support those services after that. And I think really FY twenty-six is all we've put in writing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's certainly not, not the best case scenario that Community Action has sort of put the towns in this light that we're stopped funding them because that was, you know, certainly never our intention, but.
Prior to that, do they have other sources of money for the food pantry?
Well, I think they've always had multiple sources of funding.
They always have, I think.
But as far as the West County.
Yeah, they get a block, block grant for food assistance that goes to subsidize food pantry operations. Some of that's always gone to the, the operation in Shelburne. And they, they do fundraising. And they have usually foundation, United Way support, it all goes into the big bucket. So they've always seeking that. So it's never been the sole, I believe the sole source of funding, at least when they, we've put together the application to get, put the CDBG, after CDBG funds, they've always provided us a budget showing that there are, there are money, much more expenses than just what Buckland and Shelburne have been historically picking up with its, there. And so they have to cover it from these other resources. So they have a development department and they're constantly looking.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Heather, are these motions?
Yes.
Good here? Okay.
Those motions are set to go.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to request the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to extend the performance period of Buckland fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three CDBG to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
With that request, I'll make a motion to request the EOHLC to transfer twenty thousand dollars of uncommitted funds to the existing West County Emergency Food Pantry Project.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to, upon approval, additional funds for the food pantry project to amend and extend Buckland's contract with Community Action Pioneer Valley to provide food pantry services.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Says a lot, Linda.
But you won't have to see me in, again, for all these different things.
We've heard that before. We always like you to come.
I'll make a motion to extend the existing contract with Breeze Way Farm Consulting, Inc. to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five to administer this grant. And to authorize the Select Board Chair to sign all related extension, budget amendment and contract documents.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
You, Linda.
I'll scan that to you tomorrow.
All right, so we are at five fifteen, so we're going to give a little bit of time because our next one is for Mohawk Trail at five thirty. So we'll move into some of our agenda items. Got a fiscal year twenty-six budget update. Do we want to move into that, Heather, or do we want to table that?
I can just speak briefly to the fact that the budget, budget process is ongoing. We've received all of our assessments from the school districts, from senior services, from the shared police services. Everybody has done a great job of keeping costs as, as conservative and as on point as possible while still growing and developing their individual departments, which is what we are always looking for. I will have a, the finance committee was going to meet last night, but we had a series of scenarios that prevented them from having to meet. So they were not able to sort of sign off on the final budget, which means they'll meet on the thirty-first. And I'll have a budget for you, a final budget for you at your next meeting. I think that's all I can really report today.
All right. So I think we're going to just table all these, all of these motions for the budget documents until we.
I want finance committee to have a chance to weigh in on them also.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. The draft twenty-five annual town meeting warrant review.
This is my favorite time of the year. It absolutely is.
I don't think you were saying that like twenty-five minutes ago.
No, the warrant is my, I mean, the budget, that's, that's, that's a challenge every year. But the actual town meeting document is always, always enjoyable. So this is a draft that you have in front of you. What is the board's pleasure? Would you like me to sort of scan through the articles quickly?
I like scanning.
Like scanning? Okay, so after you have a chance to look at this document tonight and sort of give me your, I know Larry, we don't like the word blessing anymore, but your, 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 this isn't a final document, so I don't want to vote necessarily, but just your, your appreciation that this is the document that will go forward through the town meeting process. I will forward to the moderator and we'll ask her to put together the consent calendar, which is your article number one. Article two is the acceptance of the annual town reports. Liz Saron is hard at work at your two thousand twenty-four annual report document. It'll be as complete as it probably has been in many years. She's had so many new reports coming, coming in. Article three are your salaries of elected officials. Article four is your omnibus town operating warrant, your town, town operating budget article. Article five is your special line items. These are the ones that we vote and they carry forward and accrue from fiscal year to fiscal year. Article six will be your Mohawk Trail Regional School Assessment. Article seven will be your Mohawk Trail School, uh, School District Capital Assessment. Article eight is the, also to do with the Mohawk Trail Regional School District. This is the appropriation for the emergency water heater replacement that we reformed of last, last fall. They've already made these emergency repairs and this will be the assessment to the Town of Buckland. It's about seventy-four hundred dollars. I'm, I'm counting it as a, as a capital item and will likely recommend that we use free cash to cover that portion. Article nine is your tuition and transportation for Smith Vocational School. We are not anticipating any students attending Smith Folk from the Town of Buckland. However, I am not comfortable zero, but zero lining that budget because then we'd have to come back in future fiscal years if necessary. Article ten is your tech school operating assessment. That assessment is up quite a bit this year as a result of an increase of the number of students that will be attending Franklin County Tech School in the fall. I believe we're up to twenty-four students?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four students.
You had a great presentation by Rick who said it was five and a half percent. You got lawled into different licensing and difficult to get to twenty-four jump, which means our portion of that five and a half percent is significant compared to the other towns.
Right, yeah. When we jump from eighteen students to twenty-four students, I think that's a, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a significant jump. But certainly a credit to the work that the tech school is doing to provide programming that our students are, that appeal to our students.
And it's less expensive than going to Smith.
Well, in, 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 in neither case does a student have, 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 have any cost. To the, to the school, I mean, to the, to the town, I guess, yes, the tuition is less, but we, we pick up transportation and capital.
Right.
And tax, so.
Okay.
It's, none of it is, none of it is cheap. None of it is cheap. The Franklin County Tech School Capital Assessment is about fifty-seven hundred dollars this year. That will be something that we look to raise and appropriate. Article twelve, thirteen and fourteen all deal with your wastewater operations. Those are all treated as enterprise funds. So they have to be called out as separate articles. Article fifteen is capital expenses to be purchased with free cash. We have certified three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of free cash this year. And we will use the, those funds to enter into a lease agreement with a, for a highway truck. We will spend seventy-five thousand dollars on road repairs and paving. We'll put ten thousand dollars toward our shared police capital expense commitment. Ten thousand dollars towards a town administrative grant match program. And ten thousand dollars towards our Buckland Museum improvements. They have been working hard on doing some safety improvements to that building, including electrical work. Article sixteen is also capital expenses, but these projects will be funded with the housing rehabilitation reimbursement funds that we were just discussing with regards to the community food pantry. I am proposing twenty-five thousand dollars to replace and add lighting, LED lighting to the, to the new salt shed and to the Mayu Storage Building. Highway has done a great job of repurposing that building for storage purposes. The only problem is they can't see anything. So we have some good quotes from some local contractors to make those. And the salt shed doesn't have any lighting at all. So for twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll make some improvements there. I'm also recommending fifty thousand dollars to be spent for town hall structural repairs. As you know, we've identified some, some structural beam work that should be done in the basement below the assessor's office. And then the remainder of those funds will be used to do further assessment and engineering for the other repairs to the front of the building and the foundation. In your copy, I do have ten thousand dollars for the Community Action Food Pantry Support. However, with the motion that you just made with Linda Overing, I would recommend that we strike that since we'll be meeting our commitment for twenty thousand in FY twenty-six. We will save that for potentially.
Do you know when we'll have the answer from Linda? I, I know she doesn't, she's pretty confident that that money's going to go through, but.
Before, I, I anticipate that we will know before town meeting.
Okay.
And if, and if for whatever reason, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities denies that reappropriation, we can certainly re-add this in a motion. Article seventeen is your town debt service. Here we are looking to appropriate a total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. That pays the long and short-term debt, principal and interest for town hall renovations done to the building in the nineties? No, early two thousand. Yeah. Also, the construction of the highway garage and then a small portion for the Nilman Road culvert replacement. Article eighteen is our other post-employment benefits, commonly known as OPEB. Each year you have put aside twenty thousand dollars into that trust fund. We would propose to do the same this year, coming from free cash. Article nineteen is a placeholder for the approval of prior fiscal year invoices. As of right now, we have, we have not identified any prior year invoices. That is due largely to the fact that we have a cracker deck accounts payable team that keeps things clean. Article twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two are stabilization appropriations. The remainder of the free cash that we have not spent on capital improvements, we would look to portion out between your highway stabilization, police stabilization and your general stabilization. Article twenty-three, the, the town has received a petition grant article from the Buckland Historical Commission. As you know, they were applying for a grant to complete surveys of historical sites in Buckland. The grant application was contingent upon a grant match in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. They did receive last, word last week from Mass Historic that they were awarded the grant. So they have asked for a petition article asking town meeting to appropriate those funds. The finance committee has not had a chance to review this article. And, but it's, it's important to note that the Historical Commission, should they move this in front of town meeting, which I think is their intention, it would mean that that twelve thousand five hundred would have to be deducted from someplace else in the budget in order to accommodate that amount of money. So that would be, and I, and I know that the Historical Commission will work with the moderator on the logistics of all of that. Article twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six are amendments to the general bylaws. Article twenty-four, there's a request to move town meeting from the Saturday to a Tuesday, which is, I believe you, you had town meetings on Tuesdays before the pandemic and we moved it to Saturday. So I think this is looking to bring that back to that practice. Twenty-five, single-use plastics bylaw. In your original bylaw, there was an exemption for nonprofits as well as the Mohawk Trail Regional High School. This mo, this article seeks to eliminate that exemption. I, I've had follow-up conversations with Mohawk with regards to what the cost, the cost implications would be to the high school if they were to get rid of using their plastic silver. the cost implications would be to the high school if they were to get rid of using their plastic silverware. That's my understanding is that they use disposable plastic products for each of their lunches and what the cost would be to purchase reusable silverware. If there's a delta, I have said that the Town of Buckland would entertain or at least consider a proposal to use our recycled dividend programs funds to help them meet that cost. I don't know that there is a deficit, but I did say that as we've, as we're changing the bylaw and making them no longer exempt, that we would at least consider a proposal for RDP funds.
They must have been using silverware years ago. Because it's, Buckland Sheldon's always used silverware when they thought Corray would always silverware, so I don't know, they must have silverware there.
If you.
They what that? Yeah, Buckland Sheldon hasn't been, they must too, so I'm just curious to, you know.
In twenty twenty-three, I don't, you know, I had to go back into my email and, and, and get the details. But students and teachers at BSE had applied to DEP for a grant to change over their silverware practice from plastic to reusable. And DEP had turned their grant down, they had denied them those funds, it was about fifteen hundred dollars, because Buckland and Shelburne both had what we call RDP, the Recycled Dividend Program Funds available. And so DEP felt that the towns should use those funds first. And we had a conversation here amongst ourselves and agreed that we could do that. It was about seven hundred and fifty dollars per town. In the end, the district found those funds within their food services budget. So again, work in progress, but I just wanted to let you know that, that, you know, those conversations have been ongoing.
What kind of plates do they use?
It is interesting.
I don't know.
Where did all their silverware go?
That's what I'm saying.
What do they use for plates?
That's what we always had when we were in school.
They used to be silverware and Melmac plates, yeah. And, and all the schools have heavy duty washing machines because the sixth graders got to run it, remember? You, you were one, yeah.
I spent most of my time in that kitchen washing dishes.
I bet, I bet.
That's just because we didn't want them in classrooms. We'll have machine to do that.
During COVID, that they, after COVID, that they changed into, you know, disposable.
Right, but why would you just drill that stuff away though?
I know, so, yeah, yeah. So I guess I just, I'm just mentioning it now so that it's not a surprise when this comes up again. Getting to the end here, Article twenty-five is a vote to amend the town's dog bylaws to bring them into consistency with changes in the Mass State Law. It deals specifically with kennel licensing. And I do see the typo there in that first line. Articles twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are zoning bylaw amendments. Again, Article twenty-six revisits the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, commonly known as the ADU. And this is also bringing our, our current bylaw, which was adopted in twenty twenty-one, into compliance with recent changes to the state, state law, which makes ADUs allowable by right in most, in most situations. Then there is a zoning bylaw amendment to amend the alternative development, alternative development method paragraphs to encourage pollination, that we would be looking to place pollinating methods and create incentives there. And then lastly, further definitions for the mobile, mobile home use, again, bringing it into compliance with changes in the state, state law. So that is a lot of information that I just gave you very quickly. Oh, and I, one more, the FERCog Charter Amendment. The Council of Governments is amending their charter for the first time in probably thirty years. And there will be a, all of the member communities have to have this on their town meeting warrant for review and acceptance by its residents. The actual changes are too extensive to put into your warrant document, so we'll, we'll create a link and have handouts available to town clerks. It's kind of like what we do with the longer zoning articles.
I have a question to go back to the accessory dwelling. This isn't, this isn't change that we voted that for short-term rentals about our requirements, does it?
No, one of the exemptions in the state, the legislative changes for ADU creates an exemption that towns can still regulate their, the short-term rental use of those ADUs. So our, our short-term rental bylaws will remain exactly as they are now. That's a good question, Joan. So I think that I would just want to point out two things is that, one, is that this introduction of the, of the warrant serves the purpose of letting you know that, A, you have a petition article and two, that the Planning Board is bringing forward zoning bylaw amendments and they would have to acknowledge and report this date that, that this on their forms for the Attorney General's Office, that you received a copy of this. So I just want to make sure that goes on the record. And obviously, if there's any questions or concerns, you know where to find me and I'm happy to go over individual articles as necessary. And you'll have a final draft of this at your next meeting. Right, that it would be, they would have to present in their motion. Yeah, no.
You have my blessing. Come back, back to blessings again.
Larry's on it, that's all I needed to hear.
I, I appreciate that.
All right. So nothing to vote on for that then? We are up to almost five forty here. Our school people out in the hallway?
Yeah.
We are. Have the Mohawk Trail Regional School District Two D Eight T Steering Committee here to present the board. They're prepared to share the analysis of the five models for the Burke Twelve Development.
There's a chair right over there, Lynn.
Hi. Heather, are we able to present?
Oh, yes. Larry, would you do me the honors of pushing the button on the side of that computer screen? Well, it's more because you're tall.
But you are techie, Larry.
Don't tell him that, he's, he'll be sad.
I don't think Larry can get sad. There we go. Just, it's just a, yeah, perfect, great. Here we go. So just give me a minute to catch up and I'll be right with you.
Lynn doesn't want to come in?
I don't know.
I've waved her in.
But just so I can, I might as well introduce, you know Cheryl Stanton, who's the superintendent, you know who I am. And this is Ken Birch, who's the Chair of the, Acting Chair of the Holloman School Committee.
Do you, do you need it right up? I mean, it'll just take me another minute, but.
We can probably get started and then.
I will catch right up.
We'll catch up. So I have to be at Cole Rain at six forty-five for the budget meeting. So I think, if you don't mind, we'll get started and catch up with the, with the slides when I'm done with my very small part and pass it over to you folks. So as you all are aware, we are here to talk about the analysis of the five models that the Steering Committee along with Burke Twelve are exploring. The reason that we're doing this is to think about sustainability, but not in the short term, really in the long term. So thinking about where can we be and how, what is the best way to be organized to educate children, not from now until twenty thirty, but from twenty thirty to twenty sixty, right? So there's a lot of projections in the work and quite a bit of analysis. But what we want to make sure that everyone understands is that these decisions are town decisions. They are, they are your decisions and no decision by the Steering Committee or the school committees have been made. We are going along the ride with Burke Twelve and looking at all the same data you are, trying to give feedback and answer questions as best we can, knowing that the goal for us is, once we have gone out to the communities and gotten feedback, the Steering Committee will take the next step of consolidating that feedback, digesting that feedback, and potentially coming out with a model to move forward into Stage Three. Oh, they are, wow. Thank you. Next slide, please, Vanna. Okay, we know that, next. So very briefly, you know the challenges, you've lived here, you live these challenges every day as Select Board and Finance Committee members. Declining enrollment, rising operational costs, relatively flat state aid, and the increasing needs of our student body. Next slide. These are the models that we are looking at, models one through five. And on the continuum of change, Model One is no change, status quo, to give you all a baseline of where your assessments and educational programming will move if we remain organized exactly as we are, all the way through to Model Five, which is the idea of a single campus. So in between, there are other models and we will get into the details of those in a minute. Am I doing these too?
You are.
I am, okay. Next slide, thank you. So when we think about the big ideas that have come out of the analysis, we have thought about enrollment decline and fiscal pressures that will continue and that, as you are well aware, the pressures will create ongoing budget gaps that result in rising town assessments, a reduction in educational programming, and services, or both. So we can't continue down this status quo without there being an impact in the school districts. Next. One of the high-level findings is also that larger cohorts of students and staff will ensure access to programs and services and expansion of peer networks that will enable access to unique programs and may allow for expansion of new programming like world language at the elementary grades to career pathways in the high school. When we are looking at cohort sizes, and by that I mean a single classroom in a single grade in an elementary school, when those class sizes are four to six students, that peer cohort is very small and we would argue too small. And it doesn't allow administrators and teachers the flexibility to move students to another classroom, to engage in other experiences with peers. And larger peer cohorts can improve the student experience that our students have. Next slide, please. So the next high-level finding is that, again, on the continuum of change, the models may result in light upgrades, renovation, and/or new construction, right? So if we are talking about, you know, closing a single school, maybe light renovations to the other elementary schools would be required versus all the way to a single campus where there potentially is a new addition or new school building for elementary school and renovation for the high school. With that being said, as I mentioned, we're not looking at now for the next six years in terms of sustainability. I say that because any large-scale renovation, any large-scale addition or new building will require a relationship with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority. That process, many of you know, takes usually six to seven years. So just so you know and we're clear, we are, as a district, putting in a statement of interest that has no monetary tie to it, a statement of interest at any time, we can pull back. But if we don't do a statement of interest for a potential school building or renovation, then we will miss an entire year of being in the queue, which puts us not at six or seven years, but at seven or eight years. And as you know, the reality of getting your first SOI approved is a little slim, unless you have good friends in the legislature and I'm sure that we can arm wrestle some folks to, to get them in our good graces. This is a project and a sustainability study that is really well researched and, in my opinion, involves an amazing amount of community outreach and would and could, I would argue, to MSBA is exactly the kind of thing that they're looking for us to be doing as regional rural school districts to help solve some of these sustainability issues that we're currently facing. Let's see, and then finally, I think we should be on slide nine. A single campus achieved as either, I kind of blurred those two together, sorry about that. But a single campus achieved as a renovation and/or a new construction could yield a contemporary pre-K twelve facility that is efficient in its organization of resources, fully aligns educational programming, while offering flexibility for the future. And I think I'll leave it at there.
So the next one's the timeline.
The next one's the timeline, I'll do, I'll do that. So the timeline that's up there, the, the top half is really sort of our process. We are now in what we're calling Phase Two, which is of this sustainability study, which is the modeling and the community outreach that we're doing right now. Once we recommend an option, a model to follow, something that we're, that we'd like to pursue and the school committees have agreed that that's what they would like us to do, then we would. then we would need to go into phase three, which we would have Burke twelve or someone else doing a great deal of additional in-depth work specific to that particular model. So, you'd be doing a lot of financial, um, information. If there's construction involved, then you'd go into what the, you know, all the debt information, all the, um, all the, exactly. People want to know, where's my kid going to go to school? How long is it going to take him to be on the bus? All of that kind of in-depth work will get done once we have determined a path to press forward on. So, we figure any of this and all of this would have to be memorialized in a regional agreement. And the regional agreement would have to be adopted by all eight towns. That's where the towns come in to vote on this yes or no. We don't expect that that could happen until somewhere around late fall of twenty twenty-six. Then, once you agree on a new regional agreement, you get two fiscal years to actually, before you actually have to operate that way. Desi gives you two additional fiscal years so that you can kind of get yourselves organized. And we figure the new agreement launch would be somewhere in twenty twenty-eight. So, that's kind of on our side. On the, uh, MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority side, we are now submitting an SOI in April of twenty-five. It's very nonspecific. Is we going to do a renovation and/or construction project in our district? It can be pulled at any time. Once, they will not tell us whether we're accepted into eligibility until December of twenty twenty-five. Then, there's another two hundred and seventy days where they do, they've, you know, there's all kinds of feasibility studies. They look at our enrollment, they look at all kinds of things. Then, if you're accepted into that, you get into feasibility where they have actually a project team, you get drawings, you, that's when we would come back to the towns to say, this is what it's going to cost, this is the, these would be the loan terms, and do you approve the capital? That's the second vote that would require, be required from a town, if you're, you're into a construction phase. Then, the design and the bill takes up the rest of that time, and the earliest we would anticipate being able to open anything, if all of this went perfectly swimmingly, would be about twenty thirty. So.
We do the, we do the timeline first because we've gotten a lot of questions about the models and what does this mean in terms of when things can happen. So, we're laying this out first for you, for the regional agreement and the MSBA. So, you can keep that in the back of your minds as we go through the models and what the individual models might require.
So, we're on to the models.
Yeah, so. Two slides, another slide. So, model one is, is a status quo with some efficiencies, um, that are being pursued and that have been identified. Essentially, um, this model involves, according to the analysis, uh, that Burke twelve has done, assessments rising around five percent a year, um, you know, for the foreseeable future. Um, the, um, this is really the baseline, um, and, um, just to compare everything else with. Uh, next slide. So, there's a lot of information here. We'll, we'll leave it with you. Do people, will people have that?
They have access, yeah.
On the, on this slide, just the advantages and disadvantages. There are advantages to having smaller, smaller classes, smaller schools, uh, small class size and so on. Um, but the cost is high. Uh, and there's some disadvantages even educationally, um, when the classes get too small. Holloman, we have a couple of classes that are only six kids, a couple of grades. Um, so that's really too small from, from a variety of standpoints. Um, the, just want to call your attention here to the lower right, um, FY twenty thirty. I don't know if I can go up a little bit. So, we're going to switch nomenclature here. For the baseline, this is what we're, we're seeing as the fiscal picture overall, uh, for Mohawk Trail and Holloman, um, in, in FY twenty thirty. We're going to switch after this when we get into the others where there are savings to talk about year five rather than twenty thirty, because twenty thirty is not actually going to be year five. That all, that, the models assume that next year is the first year of, of, of changes happening and, and that's not going to happen. But, uh, we sort of needed to embed the analysis into what was real now and sort of project out from that. So, that's, that's the reason for that. I guess go to the next slide. Let's see. So, this shows the Buckland Town assessments, the orange, and, and overall. So, the orange bar shows status quo for total Mohawk Trail plus Holloman. Um, and the, uh, blue is for Buckland only. Um, the Buckland, uh, uh, assessment increases from two point nine million in the current year to three point, three point six million in twenty thirty. This is, uh, um, constant dollars. So, this is a real increase. Um, so it's, 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 it's a challenge. I do want to call your attention to a line that doesn't beg for attention, which is that gray-green line that is flat. That's state funding. Uh, and we only took it up to the current year, but prospects are probably, it's not going to suddenly slip way out of pushing, but anyway. Um, so that obviously has an impact on the assessments. On the next slide, uh, this gets into model two. Model two here is simply a merger of the two school districts, um, which, which has some administrative, uh, savings, um, but in the larger scheme of things, not a lot of savings. Um, this, the, uh, five schools, uh, would continue to all, all operate. Basically, it's, it's status quo. Um, I think Cheryl's job would be a little easier because you wouldn't have to double everything. But, um, uh, basically, um, it's just where that finally merges Holloman into Mohawk Trail. So, Charlemont-Holly would become, you know, full, uh, pre-K through twelve participants in the Mohawk District. On the next slide, uh, this, this again shows the base, oh, I guess we still got FY twenty thirty. We're going to drop it after this. But, um, just relatively limited savings. Uh, it does potentially provide a better springboard, um, for number one alignment. Although, I think we're doing pretty well. Um, we use the central office and we try to coordinate and try to, try to keep the, the, the program aligned and, and moving forward. But, um, it, it could be a staging point for further change. Um, and so there's some advantages there. But not, it's not going to save us physically, that's very clear. So, with that, we move to model three.
Okay, model, model three is, again, fairly simple. It's just the moving of sixth grade to the Mohawk Trail School District. Now, we, this was discussed back in twenty seventeen, um, but at that point, the towns, the first town that, that considered it as a regional agreement amendment rejected it. And at that point, they said they rejected it because they didn't see any urgency, um, to, it might be a good idea, but why do we have to think about this now? So, we're back, six years later, because it's clearly urgent. Um, this would still leave all four elementary schools. There would be some, and now, every model from hence, three, four, five, all assume the merger of Mohawk Trail and Holloman, and we're not doing separate things at this point. So, we'd have all four elementary schools. There would be some efficiencies that you'd get from consolidating the sixth grade and sharing of the mo, of the middle school staff, but not a lot. This isn't a long-term solution, but potentially it could set the stage for future consolidation because you would have additional room in the elementary schools, um, to, uh, subsume other, other kids that would come in. There's some impact on education, but the research is very mixed. There is a, a brief that Burke twelve did specifically on what's, where does sixth grade belong? And that's on the website, and people can certainly take a look at that.
And can I just add, it comes into play later because there are scenarios in which moving sixth grade to the middle school at Mohawk Trail commits you to do certain things that otherwise are too many kids.
So, if we move to the next slide. There we go. This again shows you the advantages and disadvantages. There, as I said, there's some staff efficiencies, but you retain all of your facilities and their ongoing capital needs, which we are estimating at about a million dollars a year. They, you know, we try to accumulate them and give you a capital of, uh, program every once in a while. So, it's not, we're not rescuing you for a million dollars a year, but in general, that's what we estimated we'd take to deal with all five buildings. Um, there's base savings in total annual assessments at about six hundred and thirty to seven hundred and twenty-five that could be achieved over, over time. And now, I want to make it clear that the savings that we're going to be talking about here are five-year aggregate savings over the years one to five under these models. So, when I start talking about, and Ken's talking about savings, that's what we're talking about. The major savings come in what we call base plus, which is base, base efficiencies are basically class size of sixteen, fairly, you know, some staff, uh, reductions. But base plus is really a class of twenty and more aggressive, um, staff reduction, some of which would be really difficult to achieve if we keep all five buildings. So, just, just to keep that up. So, if we go to the next slide, the, um, this shows the, uh, the Buckland assessments in the status quo versus models one, two, and three. The blue bar is the status quo or the baseline. This is your operating assessment for FY twenty-five and then projected through the next five years that you've been seeing as if nothing changes. So, Buckland's assessment would go up from about two point nine million to about three point six million over that period. The orange bar is model one with base efficiencies, again, sixteen per class, more modest staff reductions. That would save Buckland about a hundred thousand dollars a year. That's really it. The gray bar is model two with the base efficiencies, and the gold bar is model three with the base efficiencies. So, if you, if you just look at this, you see there's very limited savings from models one, two, and three. In fact, model two actually increases assessments somewhat for the current pre-K to twelve towns because you're, the, the operating costs of Holloman are then shared by all eight towns, and that somewhat outweighs the decrease in assessments you would get from Charle, Charle, Charlemont, Charlie and Holloman, which is what I always call them, Holloman and, uh, Holly and Charlemont's participating in the, in the operating expenses of the other six schools, but it's somewhat offset. So, um, you would actually end up with a little bit higher assessment under model two than you do under, uh, modeled one. And that, that helps, again, offset the savings you might get from model three. But even under model three, Buckland's assessment in year five is still higher than it is in the, under the status quo. So, you, that doesn't look especially attractive. Right. Back to Ken.
Yeah, so model four is really multiple models. This is where it starts getting complicated. We're, we're.
I can use the ready.
Yeah, right. Uh, contemplating closing one, two, or three of the elementary schools. So, there are different levels that will play out here. With these models and with model five, uh, which is all on a single campus, there is potential for significant reduction in staffing, significant savings and otherwise as well. The hope would be, I should say, to plan this out so that, uh, the reduction in staff would come over time through attrition to the extent possible. And that's, that's a concern for multiple reasons, including that the, the schools, I think, are the largest employer in our area. So, um, so that's, that's something to be aware of. If we, uh, I know there's a lot, a lot of words here about, uh, various aspects of this, but if we go to the next slide, it's portrayed a little bit, uh, graphically in, in, in the middle here. So, on the left is total assessment, year five, assuming no capital investment. So, um, if you go down to a single elementary school, it's actually clear there will have to be some capital investment. Most, I think, the, the talk has been about BSE, Buckland-Schulbert, being the one elementary school. If, if it's not relocated from Mohawk Trail. And, um, and a fortunate fact is that Buckland-Schulbert is in the most challenged condition, uh, in terms of the building itself. The other, at least Anderson and Holloman are in better shape. Um, so there's some work there, but also the kids don't fit. So, we'll, we'll get back to that. You may have to build, you would have to build an addition, uh, to make BSE work. Not much space in that building for, for all the kids, for all the elementary schools. So, if you look on the right side of this, fifteen point eight million is really, uh, a, a better comparison. That's assuming a fifty, forty million dollar capital project. And forty million dollar capital project would require twelve million dollars in, in debt and borrowing. And so, we'll, we'll combine those later in the presentation. So, that's, uh, the last two lines are, you've got two elementary schools, uh, which is, is a little effy in terms of the, you said, light, light renovation. I think it's a little bit more than light renovation, that you, that you'd have to do in that case. And, uh, before, we went down to three elementary schools. Clearly, there were ways to make that work with the current buildings. So, for the next slide, shows Buckland operating assessments for, um, closing, uh, three schools and for closing two schools, not, not taking into account the capital investment you need to make. So, I think we have a later slide that's going to be better, uh, in terms of showing you what the actual impact is. However, this is probably reasonably okay. The status quo, as compared with having two surviving elementary schools, the, the assessment would go from three, from three point six million to a little longer three million. So, you're talking more substantial savings. Again, for, for closing three schools, I don't think these figures are really reliable because you're going to have to build.
Okay, before I get to model five, Dina tells me that there's no sound on the TV.
There is not. There has not been, unfortunately.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah. Falls, Falls Cable and Comcast have been going through some growing pains. When it's redistributed on YouTube and on the Falls Cable website.
Okay.
It does have sound. And then, when it's replayed, it does, unfortunately, live, it doesn't.
I believe with it live on YouTube, there is sound.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, she switches over to YouTube.
She's just like, I'm sure you're reeling, but I can't hear a word. So, I just thought I would mention.
I love the support, though.
Okay, well, let me get to model five then. So, model five is the, moving everyone to a single campus at Mohawk Trail, at the current Mohawk Trail site. This would offer the highest amount of savings, which would be somewhere in the range of four and a half to five point three million dollars over the five-year period that we're working with, which is slightly more than having both the, uh, the sixth grade moving to, to Mohawk Trail and one elementary school. And this is, again, before renovations, before any capital. Obviously, there are opportunities to share the resources at Mohawk Trail, everything from, as Cheryl was saying, foreign languages and potentially music and theater for the, for the younger grades. All of our special education services would be being provided at a single site rather than at three or four elementary schools. And there would be a more opportunity to create a strong connection between elementary students and Mohawk Trail, which would help us, we think, with retention. So, that's the summary there. Again, going to the next slide, you have the advantages and disadvantages. There are, there would be more opportunities and equitable, equitable access to, um, all of the services and support and enrichment that we offer. The school community would have a modern educational environment with upgraded technology. We'd have environmental standards, um, and physical space enhancements that we're lacking in the current, in the current facilities. The district's current elementary schools would exist, and so we would have to create a new identity for the, at least the elementary school, um, that would be, we could use to generate community support and, and community interest. I mean, it's brand-new, it would be a brand-new thing. But we would need, um, MSBA financing to do any of this. So, if we go to the, we'll just look without financing first. So, the next slide is, shows you Buckland's assessment under the status quo. Is the blue bar, is the blue bar, and then the orange bar is what it would be with, before any debt, under model five. Buckland would, would save approximately three point five million over the first five years before debt. And this is about five hundred thousand more than if we keep one elementary school before debt. So, they're very, they're somewhat similar in terms of, of, uh, financial impact. But there are, you know, advantages to having everybody all in one place, um, that we don't get by doing it the other way. So.
So, yeah, so before we come down to the capital cost.
Right.
I just want to look at the facilities a little bit on the next slide, uh, which shows, um, this shows what works and what doesn't. If it's red, it doesn't work. So, um, a single elementary school, pre-K through six, um, is five hundred and fifty-nine, uh, students. The capacity, which is the orange line up there for BSE is three eighty, um, for the other elementary schools is less. Theoretically, everybody could fit into Mohawk Trail right now, but that doesn't actually work because you, uh, for, for younger children, you have rooms that work in, in. work because you, for, for younger children, the bathrooms that work and, and a lot of other things, it just, just don't work. So now in this case, if you look around about the middle there, you'll see a, like a green, green with Corrine and Holomont closing. Pre-K through five, it does fit if you move the sixth grade to the, it barely fits, but if you move the sixth grade to, to the middle school. So that's, that's where we're thinking about where the sixth graders should be, comes to play a fiscal role. Anyway, this, this just shows what, what's possible and what's not. The next slide, so Burke twelve are not architects. They didn't do, didn't ask them to design buildings. They threw out a couple of ideas. One at BSC on the upper left there, the idea of a second floor addition over part of the building might, might be something that, that might be practical. Other, some people have said the renovations might be so extensive that you actually might want to build a new school and tear the old one down. I, I know there's, there's a lot to study there, but we need to decide sort of what direction to go in. On the lower right, Mohawk Trail, this idea is to build a pre-K through two addition on the lower right there. So this would be new, so it would be for little kids. It would be a, a way to do new construction, some renovation of the way next to that is the, is the grades three through five, in order to have an elementary school there. One issue is that the renovations, if you were actually to go into Mohawk Trail and want to do a renovation to make it work for the entire school population, you probably can't do it anyway, probably need an addition anyway. But aside from that, you're going to trigger all the code requirements and it becomes so expensive now that a lot of schools are deciding they need to do new construction rather than renovation because the renovation is actually more expensive. So this idea is a way to try to get a, stay under a thirty percent cap, or a thirty percent, I don't exactly how it's valued, but a, a value of building and renovation to keep it under that requirement.
So the next slide will show you debt service in varying amounts going forward five years. This, the assumptions that we're using in, in determining these debt service amounts are a seventy percent MSBA reimbursement, which is the difference between the project cost and what the debt amount is. So on us, on a eighty million dollar project, which is much of what the analysis that follows is based on, we're assuming a debt amount of twenty-four million. And it, you know, fifty million, you would be assuming debt of fifteen million. On a hundred and forty-five million dollar project, you would be assuming debt of forty-three and a half million. And this is, they will reimburse for reimbursable costs and not all costs are reimbursable. So we, we do have to remember that. We have gotten sixty-three percent reimbursement on our most recent MSBA projects and there's a seven percent or six percent bump that you can get if you are regi- regionalizing further. So by bringing Holomont into our region, we would be eligible for this extra six, six percent.
Six percent.
And there may be some other ways if we're doing green construction, if we're doing.
Two percent.
Two, yes, two percent for green construction. There are other ways that we might be able to enhance that somewhat. So if you go to the next slide, you will see savings and projections on, with the annual debt service. So this shows the, again, Buckland's annual assessment before and after debt service for, for models four A, which is the single elementary school, not, you know, closing, closing four and having one on a different site, and model five, which is the centralized campus. The blue is a status quo. The orange is the model A assessments. The gray shows model A with debt service on twenty-four million, assuming the seventy percent reimbursement on an eighty million project. And the gold is model five without debt and the light blue is model five with the debt. So if we look at what the actual, the numbers are in those little boxes at the bottom, and you have to look at this on your own, after debt service is applied, Buckland's annual operating assessment would increase in year one from two point one five million with no debt to about two point five five million with debt. And by year five, it goes up from two point six six million to about three point oh six with debt. But the cumulative savings over the five years drops from about four point seven million if you don't have debt and for, on the four, option four, to about two point seven million when you add the debt in. Now, if the reimbursement rate drops to say about fifty percent, then your five-year savings drop slightly more than half to about a million three. So looking at model fi- model five after debt, the annual operating assessment in year one would drop from two point one million with no debt, I mean, would increase from two point one million with no debt to two point five million. And by year five, would increase from about two point six to three point zero, which is similar to model four A. The cumulative savings drop from about four point eight million with no debt to two point eight million with debt. And if the reimbursement rate drops to say fifty percent, then the five-year savings drop slightly, to slightly more than half to about one point four million. But I think one thing that's important to note is that under either of these, this, either the single elementary school or the centralized campus, Buckland's annual assessment is less in all years than it is with the status, just the status quo. You know, the higher, you have to figure out what debt you can support and then that will tell you what kind of project, what your reimbursement rate is about to be, what your debt, you're, you can support as, as towns, and that will tell you how much, what kind of project you can have and whether it's worth it. Because it certainly isn't worth it if the debt, cost of the debt is more than the assessment savings you're going to get from it. So that would be, once we get a direction, then we can do much more modeling in terms of what the actual costs are going to be or what they might look like.
One of the things too, when thinking about how to educate, you know, children as we're dealing with climate change, our buildings are not climate controlled. So we're having ninety-five degree days in September and in June. And so those become very difficult and challenging teaching environments, not only for students but for staff. And we anticipate seeing more of those days. And so, you know, other things to be considering in climate change is rising water table levels, particularly at Buckland Shelburne. But these are all things, I think, that, you know, if, if we have a direction of a significant addition or new construction, these are things that MSBA will bring out in the conversation about what is the best interest of teaching, learning in the community. So just to bear that in mind as, as we're thinking about buildings and sort of thinking about what would our current buildings look like in thirty years and the kind of renovation that's going to have to happen.
So Cheryl, are you okay on time?
I am. I'm making Bill do it for now.
Okay. So do you want to do transportation?
Yeah, so we can quickly go to transportation. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna spend a huge amount of time on transportation really, except to say that there are savings that could be considered with each of the models. The largest savings that we've been talking about is the single campus or a single elementary school and Mohawk Trail regional. And that's based on really moving from a two-tier to a one-tier bus system. The struggle with that is whether the bus company would be able to find drivers, which is already a challenge, because basically we're cutting their salary in half because they would only be driving one run. So that, it's, that is something that we would model out in phase three, in stage three of the work that we anticipate doing next. We anticipate some increase in travel time, but really it is for what we affectionately call our outlier kiddos, those kids who are on the very outskirts of our towns, so that the bus, you know, may leave and spend twenty minutes going to pick up the first student and then spend another fifteen minutes getting to that next student. So those are the kind of outliers that we would like to use this process to problem solve around, so that we can take and invest some of the potential savings in things like van transportation for students, putting monitors on buses for students as parents might be concerned about a kindergartner and a twelfth grader on the bus. But I would say it's more than middle school kids you've got to worry about.
Or, or fourth graders, or fourth graders.
Yeah. And I love them all.
Yeah, I've taught them all.
Yeah, exactly. So you know. But I think that those are all valid concerns that, you know, the community has, and I do think that there are ways that we can manage and mitigate that. And one of the things, next slide, that we've been thinking about, this is my favorite slide. I'm, I'm a data wonk and I love this slide. These, the dots represent where each of our students reside. And so the heat map, you can see where the majority of the student population is. And one of the things to consider as we move through the process is rather than having towns send students to a school, a single school, a single elementary school, two elementary schools, whatever their configuration, really starting to consider enrollment zones. So, you know, you may in Buckland be closer to Sanderson, if Sanderson were to stay open, and some students in Buckland are obviously very close to Buckland Shelburne. So as we move through the process and think about addition, renovation, new construction, I think we can also consider how we are transporting and where we're transporting students from, because we often see inter-district school choice to schools that are closer to the family. And sometimes even a desire to do that, to be closer to the elementary school geographically. So slide thirty-four, just to think about, when we, when we talk about this project to select board and finance, we are often really pigeonholing the conversation into assessments and projections and enrollment and all of these things. But we want everyone to know that we've been thinking about all of the educational impacts that could be envisioned as we do this work. And so we looked at it in these domains of mission and vision alignment, student experience, student supports and enrichment, I'm sorry, student supports, enrichment and extended learning, academic opportunities through curriculum and programming, collaborative and professional development, and then community and stakeholder engagement. So as status quo, it isn't that we aren't doing work in all of these domains, but if we don't do anything, then there isn't really anything more that we're, that we would be able to do because there has been a change in how we are organized. To bring the districts together, I think Ken made a good point. We are very well-aligned in curriculum. Some pieces around salary and teacher contracts, paraprofessional contracts, those are things that if the districts were to merge, could impact the educational parts of our work. If we simply move sixth grade, again, not a lot of change in what we are currently doing. There would be some improvement in sixth grade student experience. We often hear that sixth graders are ready to move from subject matter to subject matter. They are the big kids on campus and in many cases, they've been together for seven or eight years in a cohort of ten or twelve. That can be a real challenge by, by sixth grade. And so some of the student experience, student supports, enrichment, extended learning can be improved for sixth graders by moving them up, participating in sports, for example, extracurricular activities, theater, drama, music, those kinds of things. Where we see the most benefit is really in a consolidation of elementary schools and a single campus. I'll give one example of a student experience. You know, nobody, nobody wants to be a parent of that kid, right? The kid who can't stay in their seat, the kid who struggles with ADHD behavior, you know, got, and, and unfortunately gets labeled as that kid. That's hard. It's particularly hard when there's only one classroom in the school for that student, for those students at that grade level. When you build out and have four classrooms per grade level, then that kid has multiple opportunities over the course of their elementary career to engage with other students, to find their people, really learn from a multitude of adults and receive a very broad spectrum of supports because all of those are in one space. So instead of students becoming sort of the singular microscope or spotlight, we can have a group of students that have a lunch bunch or arrange for having lunch with the guidance counselor and learning some social skills together with their peers. That doesn't happen naturally when the class cohorts are so small. So I'm going on and on, but I am happy to speak more if people have questions about that, how we think about the educational improvements that we could see through, through reorganized, reconciliation or reorganization.
Okay, so we're pretty much done. If you move on Heather to slide thirty-six, which is kind of the end one. Again, we want to just emphasize that no decisions have been made. We are just now trying to get, collect community feedback on all of this information. There is a ton more information in all of these areas on the website, which is two districts, two is a number, eight ta- eight towns, eight is a number dot org. There's an amazing amount of information in there. Burke twelve has done an incredible job of, of projecting, of looking at all, issuing reports on everything from education and enrollment to where the sixth grade belong, to, to all of the financial information. There are spreadsheets after spreadsheets on their site to back up, to elucidate all of these numbers that you've been seeing tonight. So nothing's been decided. Nothing can happen until the towns and the residents agree that it should and that substantial changes are going to take time. We are not going to be doing this next September or the September after that. But I think it's important that we remind ourselves that if we don't do anything, that is also a decision. And what we're trying to do is to prevent our having to react to the pressures that are going to force us to do something and instead make a choice that we as a community proactively make to do something that's better, not only for our towns financially, but for our education, our students educationally. And that's the goal of this. So that kind of ends our presentation to you and what we would really appreciate is any feedback that you have about these models, about what you're hearing, what you like, what you have questions about and just want to say elucidate, elucidate, wasn't it?
Wow, that's impressive.
So open, open to questions and comments from anyone.
I would just say that when we think about these challenges helping them come up with the direction, maybe.
That's right.
But if you think about who we're talking about, we're talking about parents, we're talking about children, we're talking about teachers, and we're talking about the community as a whole, we're sort of respected for that. You also have to think about what's happening in the school in terms of socially, emotionally, educationally, and what's the price for that, what's the dollars for that? And that's, that's happening in the classroom. There's also the transportation. You can't avoid thinking about the same dimensions of education and social. You can't avoid thinking about the same dimensions of education, social, financial, emotional on the bus. I spend a lot of time on the school bus. It's very educational. We need to think about all of those factors and what, which model seems to preserve the vitality of the community as well as, as creates a healthy relationship between the families and the teachers and so on and so forth. We don't want anybody pissed off at the end of the session, so that's all.
Thank you for letting me ask the question. My name is Marilyn Kelsey, other than Buckland. What I noticed during this presentation, in fact, it was very interesting, that no one mentioned the declining enrollment. And particularly now that there's more attention relating to school choice.
So, a couple of things. With regards to declining enrollment, if you go to the website, there's a full report on declining enrollment. The steep decline that we've seen in the last ten years is projected to have flattened out, like much of the area in, in Western Mass. Still a concern though because there is, through a census analysis, a projected one percent continued decline. Which I think brings the question of, you know, sustaining very small elementary schools into question even further. With regard to school choice, we struggle like most Western Mass regional rural school districts because the competition for a smaller amount of students is getting more fierce. So, we at Mohawk Trail through the school committee have a school choice, I mean, a student retention committee that's talking about strategies to address why families are making choices. We do surveys of families who are leaving, whether it's school choice or not. One of the things that we notice is that school choice is often relative to where parents are working and, and/or where they can get daycare. And one of the other things we notice is that school choice is often being used for families to pursue athletic opportunities.
That's the biggie.
That's the biggie. I'm hearing often of travel team, youth programs, premier leagues, so to speak, where students from multiple towns are joining a, a premier softball league, softball, soccer. And then those coaches are recruiting students to then go to the high school where that person is a coach or where those, all of those kids on that team can continue to do their sport together. That's absolutely against the intent of school choice. School choice was never intended to develop elite athletic programs. But there's no doubt that that's what's happening. I know the athletic directors have all agreed to not sign the waivers that are required for athletics, but nothing beyond that happens at the MIA, MIAA, the Athletic Association for Massachusetts, which reviews those waivers. So, we understand here that it's a problem, but nothing is being done to really limit that, that flow of students, particularly at grade eight to school choice and six. Six and eight are the grades that mostly use school choice.
I mean, we really are trying to work on that by, Grega Lilly has been working with, with the coaches of the, at the elementary schools to really try and develop a feeling that you are Mohawk Trail warrior from the time you're in kindergarten or first grade until you graduate. And we have, you know, kids who are coming and cheering on our athletic teams. We have athletes and, you know, scholars who go down to the elementary schools to talk about what high school is like, what middle school is like, what the sports are like. We're really trying to, to keep those kids in our, and in terms of choice, our numbers have turned around over the last couple of years and we are now of a positive inflow of kids and not an outflow. But that's, you know, we're all cannibalizing each other, it's crazy. And there's, and it's a Western Mass thing. Nobody in Eastern Mass does school choice because Wellesley and Weston and all those places don't make available school choice seats. So, it's, 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 it's an issue for sure. Thanks for bringing it up. Any other questions? One thing I will say, I'll send Heather the link at the end of this. There is a survey that we really love for you to fill out that kind of prods you to think about which of these things you think is reasonable. Yeah, you're in a trip, Sarah, there you go.
Thanks, Pam.
A magical exit.
It sort of prods you to think about which of these you would support, what you like about it, what you don't like about it. Because when we go into, as a steering committee, and there's a representative from every town on our steering committee, we go into that meeting in a couple of weeks where we're trying to figure out what's our consensus here. We've all been to a lot of these meetings, but there are people who haven't. And, and we want to be able to dock it, kind of have some data to say, this is what we're getting on these surveys, these responses. So, I'll send Heather the link to that and she can pass it out. But anybody who has, has been at these meetings or has read any of this or just has an opinion, should fill out the survey so that we can get a sense of what people would like us to do and what they're willing to accept. I mean, I have to say that we haven't had anybody, surprisingly, who has said out loud in any of our meetings, "Over my dead body, you're not going to close my elementary school." I mean, I think there's a real sense now, more than perhaps ten years ago or seven years ago when we did this the last time, that there is, there is a crisis here. It's a crisis for you guys and your, and your assessment and your budgets. It's a crisis for us in terms of kids and programming and, you know, and, and getting equity and access to all of the services that we can provide. So, I think things are changing, but we really need to get everybody's opinion.
Yeah, so, and the survey this week because the steering committee is meeting next week, Thursday.
Right, for round one. I'm sure it'll take more than one round.
Central Mass now has pretty much adopted the single campus. I mean, they really have, of course, there's a lot more money now. You go to Marlboro and these places over there, high tech and everything, but they have gone to that.
And Gateway has a, Gateway has a campus like this, Athol has a campus.
Great success and I can tell you from experience, you know, when the bus comes in in the morning, it's filled with kindergartners through, through high school kids. Just, just less problems than if it's just kindergartners with fourth graders. Or middle school kids, you know, they kind of get over it. It, it can work out and they're having great success with that.
You know, and there may be ways that we can share bus drivers with another district that maybe, you know, I don't know. But also get bus monitors or something so that, you know, people are, at least for the first couple of years, so people get comfortable with the fact that, no, their kindergartner isn't going to get attacked by an eleventh grader. You know, and I don't, I don't downplay those folks' concerns. So, we just, again, once we get a direction, we can try to figure out what the major concerns are going to be and how, and how can we address it.
Now, funny Martha, because, you know, you were talking numbers there. As I said, I started in seventy-two in Coorane, then went to Buckland-Shelburne in eighty-seven. And it was close to four hundred, over four hundred kids in Buckland-Shelburne when I got there. There was three classes up every grade. And we had twenty-two, twenty-five, I had a class of forty-three in Coorane. And part of it is maybe, maybe, I'm sorry, it's the nature of the family. I could, you know, I didn't have a problem with kids and we didn't have a lot of problems with them, even in the large sizes. I think administration's got to step up because a lot of times teachers were put there and we can't, you know. If you get the support, we can turn that around. We can turn it around and, you know, it's.
And schools don't hold, I mean, our school buildings don't hold as much as they were designed to hold now because there are all kinds of special education spaces, intervention rooms, things you have to use.
Well, that's what's taken over most of Buckland-Shelburne too.
Yeah, it's taken, it takes over some of it.
I hear you.
I have a question. So, okay, suppose the school committee offers, okay, we think the best option would be to have a single campus. You go to the towns and of course, all eight have to approve, correct? And suppose it's turned down, would you come back with another option that you think that the towns would accept? I'm just, I want to understand the process.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would have to, I, I mean, we, we didn't really talk about sort of phasing as well. Sort of, how do you get, because if this takes seven years for us to get to, if the desired thing is to have one elementary school or a centralized campus or, if it's going to take several years, we all know that we don't have several years. We don't have several years left. Because we're running through our reserves and you guys are bumping up against other towns' things and some of our towns are bumping up against levy limits. So, the question is, what, what I would like to do is to figure out some sort of phasing. What can we do immediately to provide some relief? And what can we do that's, you know, as we're moving toward whatever this ultimate goal is? But mostly I'd like to get a regional agreement that says, this is what, this is our plan. These are the phases and we're all agreeing to them now. Because I don't want to have six votes on this. I don't want to say we're going to, you know, we're going to close this school today and two years from now we're going to have another vote to close another school because I, I want to fix, I want to try and do this so that we can have two, two votes. One on a regional agreement and if that's the preferred option, one on a capital appropriation. And that be it because it's, you know, and I do think we're going to have to come up with some kind, the steering committee is going to have to, that's why we're having more than one meeting, kind of, how do you, how do you get from point A to point B that you really want to get to and in a way that's responsible fiscally, that, you know, and that people can support? And also, we, we are very aware that in order to get people to close their schools, if that is the direction that people want to go, we have to have a very high value proposition. What's in it for me and my kid and my town? And so, we, I mean, that's, that has to be a big part of our discussion too. Where can you offer families and students the most? What can you offer them the most that makes them amenable to even thinking about it?
I, I would just add that it's not totally clear exactly how this goes stage by stage, but there is a steering committee that will make a recommendation to the school committees, then the school committees will blow it. If, if the initial idea is a, is a single campus and it's just not going to fly, I think we have to.
We'd have to come back.
We have to come back with, you know, like maybe two, two elementary schools stay open.
It was hard, it was hard when, a hard thing when they built Buckland-Shelburne School. I mean, my goodness, we were, we were, as a kid in Shelburne side, we were where the post office is right now at Baker School and they were written in it. And the actual argument was no child from Buckland would ever walk across the bridge. He'd always been picked, well, seriously, he'd always been picked up by a bus. And I recall, I didn't even know it, I was here in sixth grade and I looked at my class picture many years later and every kid in that room was from Shelburne Falls. Then the other class from sixth grade was, with Shelburne Falls teacher, with Shelburne side, I should say. And every kid in the other sixth grade were kids from Buckland with a Buckland teacher.
We try to avoid that.
No, but they thought it was good. It's kids, we didn't care. We were outside playing and having a great old time, you know. And it's kind of funny, sometimes it's the adults getting away is what I'm trying to say of what could be progress.
Not a small thing, I mean, Heath is, Heath is a kind of a poster child for that. It can tear a town apart in some ways. And we want to make sure that, try to make, do everything we can do to try to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Without a doubt.
So, and there are reuse possibilities, you know. There are towns that have already thought about what they would do with their school. There are towns that probably haven't given it any thought at all and maybe that's, maybe that's us, I don't know. But there are some that have.
Yeah, there are also things, so at Hallamont, people are particularly attached to the hay program, agricultural program. So I think it's going to be very important to carry that forward and hopefully expand it so more kids can.
Well, that's one of the reasons kids are also leaving Mohawk and I've told Martha before, I mean, you've locked your, you got away with the wood shop, you did away with metal shop, you've done away with home economics, you've done away with the hay that used to be up. You know, those things mean a lot to the kids that are left and I think we forgot it for a while.
I will say also that, that sort of educational visioning, what do we want our educational program to be like is also part of the next phase. And that, again, is a whole bunch of meetings with community. What do you want your school to be? What do you want it to teach? You know, we're beginning to develop a number of pathways at Mohawk Trail now. Are these the right ones? Are there more that we can add? Are there things that we're, we're trying to work with the state too to allow us to do some of the things that we should be allowed to do? So, you know, again, the whole educational visioning, where do you want it to be? What do you want it to be is part of the value proposition that we're going to try to develop and present.
And the value that the kids want to be at Mohawk Regional High School. When Clint was a kid, not that I didn't think I had him, but he was there in school. And there was, all the kids couldn't wait to get there and they came, and they already knew the kids from Charlemont. We had kids in Charlemont like several, eight years ago when their school was in trouble here. They didn't want to leave, we didn't want them to leave either. So, you're right, we got to develop that value again, we have to develop.
And there are other things, the Mexican exchange program at Sanderson is something that we could probably, you know, do. Thanks Abby for coming.
We've got to develop that again, really do.
So, anyway, that's all, that's all we have.
Great, it seems to me that a great deal of thought and energy is devoted to this.
Does a great job.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't wish this project on anybody. You know, it has been a lot of work and, and there's still a lot of work to go, so.
A lot of work to go.
Yeah, there is. Certainly thank you for, you know, hunkering down and seeing this through.
Well, hope, hope you'll fill out the survey if you haven't, you know, if you have any other thoughts. We are happy to hear them.
Everything we can do to promote a civil conversation as we move to that stage.
It is going to be difficult.
My big hope is that, you know, everybody in each community is actually, you know, really paying attention to this. And it's not just the normal political people that are, that are following it because, you know, it, it's the ones that don't pay attention that, you know, they're the ones that are going to fight back on it.
We've had decent turnouts at the community meetings. We, at BSE, we probably had fifty people in the room and another forty online. We've had probably an average of forty between thirty-five and forty-five to all of the community meetings. It's, it's hard to get, you know, and there are going to be people who are like, wait a minute, you know, I've never heard about this.
Well, and, and those are the ones that, you know.
Those are the ones. We're going to try to get them.
All right, thank you guys for coming.
Appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Where did we leave off?
You work here then tonight.
Yeah. All right. So, our first appointment is our interim administrator. That seat was open the whole time, you. You could have come in. We'd always make room for you. So, we have, I'm not sure, are we looking at all three as interim? Is it just Pam is interim? Do you have?
All, all three of these motions would apply. So, essentially the intention is that Pam will serve as your interim town administrator. Knowing that she will also continue to have responsibilities in her current role as the town's assessor. We will be asking, we'll be asking Kara, who is our treasurer collector, and Alicia, who is our town clerk, to step up and continue some of the tasks. Specifically Kara is going to take lead on your sewer commissioners' work as well as some of the, some of the other responsibilities. I can remind us all that we are Team Buckland and that we're all in. And as such, everybody will sort of need a new title and a differ, and the, is the correct term differential? Is that a proper term for the salary adjustment? So, that's the premise here, is that everybody has a part to play.
Right, no, and I'm sorry because I read it as interim administrator, not administration. That's where my confusion came from, so I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's my chance to talk.
Our interim administration, Pam Gaiet, Kara Leach, and Alicia Graves. I would make a motion to appoint Pam Gaiet to interim town administrator effective May fifth for a period of time not to exceed. um, for a period of time not to exceed ninety days and further to provide a salary differential rate um, to Pam of twenty-five, forty-five per hour.
I will second that.
Further discussion? Bring none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks Pam stepping up.
Just to kind of clarify for people, all of these, um, differentials would be coming out of um, what is already appropriated for the administrator's position.
We aren't, we aren't seeking any new appropriations.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure that got put out there.
And I do, and I am, and I am noticing that there's an extra of in each of these motions and so you'll have to.
I, I think I got past the first one.
Yes, you, yes you did, I apologize.
Make a motion to appoint Kara Leach as interim administrative assistant and interim sewer district administrator effective May fifth for a period of time not to exceed ninety days and further to provide a salary differential rate, um, to Kara of sixteen ninety-seven per hour.
I second that.
Further discussion? Bring none, all in favor?
Aye.
And motion to provide a stipend of six hundred dollars to town clerk Alicia Graves for the implementation of the code red community notification program.
I'll second that, that's great, what is that?
I.
That's like their reverse nine-one-one.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you, I just, yep, little brain freeze there.
It's okay. It, it does make it sound quite official, code red.
Little more than, yeah.
It's actually a little bit more, uh, sophisticated than just the reverse nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It's official.
That's right, congratulations.
There's more to follow.
Keep going.
Our next appointment is for, uh, the Community Development Block Grant Environmental Certifying Officer. It's Pam Guyette. I would make a motion to appoint Pam, uh, interim town administrator, now interim town administrator as a town of Buckland's environmental certifying officer for the purposes of administrating Buckland's Community Development Block Grant.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thanks for, everybody stepping up.
Yes. Uh, next we have water line improvements for Cricket Field. Do we wanna bring a little explanation?
Yeah, so, we haven't been able to formally rent the pavilion area, uh, to, at Cricket Field because there has not been a water source. Um, so there, there are some grills down there, um, you know, but we, we, we haven't encouraged the use because we haven't had any decent water, so for potential fire suppression or whatnot. Um, so, there's been a proposal from the Shelburne Falls, uh, Fire Department, Water District, uh, to install a, um, a line from Conway, no, from South, from South Street to the pavilion. Um, the town would pay for the materials and the town's Highway Department and Water District would do the actual labor. Um, so this, this does, this, I believe there was a water line there at one point.
Yes, there was, sir.
But it's, it's in bathrooms, but it's, it's been discontinued. So, this would just be sort of a small infrastructure improvement, um, that would make that property more accessible, um, to Buckland residents, or safer.
Seasonal water lines.
Seasonal water, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of fifteen hundred dollars, uh, to purchase the supplies for the installation of a seasonal water line at Cricket Field. Uh, the Shelburne Falls Fire District's Water Division and the Buckland Highway Department will provide the labor expense to be taken from the town administrator's grant match account in support of the fiscal year twenty-five Woodlands Partnership Grant Award.
That was the grant that, um, provided the funds to put some of the plantings in and redo some of the landscaping around. And the, um, uh, the group that put the plants in has made it very clear that not having water there to keep the plants watered has been a real deterrent.
Yeah, I imagine.
This, this helps in that case, too.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, we have the twenty-twenty-five Wood Bank Program in application.
So, this, this, um, uh, the success of the Buckland Community Wood Bank last year, um, was, was, was great. It was also a bit unexpected. Um, we realized that we were able to produce and distribute a lot more, uh, firewood than we had anticipated. Um, this year, um, we'd like to ask the select board to consider the Wood Bank, uh, accepting a Wood Bank policy which establishes some guidelines, um, not, um, for the volunteerism portion of the program as well as the distribution. Um, if you'd like, there's still a little bit of time, so if you wanted to take this under advisement tonight and come back with a vote next meeting, that's fine. Um, but we would like to get that Wood Bank application out. Um, that would help DCR get their plans organized for the coming year, um, so.
So, was this something that DCR kind of already had?
No, actually, I, I modeled this Wood Bank policy that you have in front of you after the town of Petersham. Um, Petersham was the first, uh, community Wood Bank program in the state of Massachusetts. Um, and they've been doing it since, I believe, two thousand and five. Um, so they've got some pretty good experience, um. And again, the idea is just to have something, something that we can provide residents so they understand what the mission of the program is as well as, you know, that we'll distribute as much wood as we possibly can. Um, I think the, the real caveat here is that if you received wood last year, you would move to the end of the list for this season. You know, that we would take applications and try to get the wood out to people that didn't receive it last year first and then as wood is still available.
Is there a limit on what you can, uh, receive in terms of wood?
Well, we would, we, we are delivering one quart of wood or, you know, give or, give or take.
Okay.
Couple of pieces. Um, and again, if you received the wood, a quart last year, you would still be eligible this season. It just might not be until the end of the season and that would be, uh, contingent upon wood being available.
Okay, be stacked into, okay. Well, the thing is that I, I, there might be misunderstanding that people think that they can get more than one quart of wood.
Well, if, if there's wood available, then that would be fine.
Mm-hmm.
But we will, uh, deliver wood to residents so long as we have it on a first come, first served basis, provided that we're able to meet the needs of people that did not receive it last year first.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I look through it, I, I think it's, I think it's good.
Mm-hmm.
Did you guys want to table it so you can have a chance to review it? Or do you want to vote on it tonight?
I think the other part that's important to note is that the wood that we've been able to make available to residents at the highway garage, there's a, there's a, there's a, a bin that we've kept firewood in, um, that will still be eligible to anybody and everybody. Um, and we'll try to keep that as full as possible throughout the season. Um, so that would, uh, continue to be available regardless of your eligibility status for the cord.
But I don't, I'm even, I'm not reading this correctly, but I don't see that, we were talking about one quart of wood that people can have, I mean.
Well, because I don't think that we would limit it.
Well, if someone gives a request for four quarts of wood, are you going to, as a town?
No, absolutely not, no.
Okay.
So, so.
I think it should be clear to people, clear to people that one quart will, you know, this is it and then maybe if there's leftover, it might be extra, but I think, people might think they can get their whole wood supply.
Right, well, I think that, that we would limit it because we would be doing the delivering. So, it's not like they would have access to four quarts. But yes, I can certainly add the language there that would make it more clear.
Last year, of people thinking they could get as much as they, you know, they needed, you know, it's, it's a great program. But I'm, I'm just, I think it should be clear to people how much, what's, 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 you know, what they can expect, you know?
Okay, yeah.
What do you think, Larry? And, um, Ben?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, um, maybe just putting something in there saying that, that, you know, um, each delivery would be granted to, you know, as one quart of wood, um.
And I just don't want if there is wood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there was wood available.
We don't intend to stockpile it and not give it out, you know, whatever, whatever we can, uh, cut and, and have, and have available, we will, we will disseminate, you know, that's, that's the whole purpose, um, of the program.
Like, this doesn't really explain that, this act, application. Or he's offering a free quart of firewood, yes, of course, all right, that's fine. Yeah, no, it says it pretty clearly here, I think.
So, you're good with that, Jim?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Make a motion to approve the Buckland Community Wood Bank policy and the twenty-twenty-five Community Wood Bank application form.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
These applications will be available on the town's website and in the town hall. People want to come in, so you can get one.
It'll look like this?
Well, that's the Google Form version.
Okay.
So, we'll create one, it's, it's an in-house. Not quite so many pages.
All right, uh, applications and letters of support. We have the, uh, MVP Program Action Grant Request and Book.
So, I don't have any of these applications and/or letters of support available for tonight and I would ask the board, um, in the interest of time, to authorize the chair to sign on its behalf uh, for the four, four grants listed here. The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, um, the American with Disabilities Action Grant for Town Hall Public Bathroom Access, uh, the One Stop for Growth Grant for the Chalamont Road Reconstruction Phase Three and the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, otherwise known as BRIC, uh, for the hazers, for the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. All of these grants will be going in, um, all of the applications will be submitted within the next couple of weeks. And if this chair would be available to sign letters of support and applications, that would be fantastic.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Bring none, favor?
Hi.
I'll be keeping you busy in the next couple of weeks.
If you can find me.
It'll keep them out of trouble.
It will.
We're in the baseball season tonight, we'll have to try to find me.
You could be anywhere.
All right, we have a couple of building use permits. Um, we have the, um, Mary Lion Foundation, uh, looking to utilize the hall uh, for Friday, April fourth, um, from eight-thirty to eleven.
I presume that's PM, correct? Or is it AM?
AM.
AM, okay.
So, that's for the upstairs here, I'm assuming. Yeah, I have no issues with the Mary Lion Foundation.
Yeah.
Always welcome here. Um, I would make a motion to accept the building use permit for Mary Lions.
Me, again?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, just, okay, I'm going second grade.
Okay.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, we also have a street use permit for the Morris Men. Um, they are looking for, uh, what's the date they're looking for?
Uh, Saturday, May tenth.
Yep. Um, I'm guessing they're gonna be out here on the.
I think there's an attachment.
Side block.
Right on the customers or two or three parking spaces.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like the chief's already signed up on it, so. All right. Make a motion to approve the street use permit for the Morris Men to perform in front of McCusker's Market on Saturday, May tenth, from four to five-thirty PM.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I, I think I'm gonna ask you to table the third use. They're still working with the race committee to determine exactly where, um, where their table makes the most sense. Or you could vote it contingent upon them securing a space that is in compliance with the race committees.
I don't think there's gonna be any issues, so just whenever they get it figured out, they can.
Okay.
Bring it to us.
Yep, perfect.
All right, we have the March eleventh minutes. Um, I made the motion to approve the minutes, March eleventh, as written.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary, wonderful job, as always. Um, we have our vendor and payroll warrants, uh, for twenty-five dash twenty-one. I'll make a motion to approve our both accounts payable and payroll warrants, uh, dated from March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item's not reasonably anticipated by chair, I have nothing, select board member concerns? Town administrators report?
Uh, I attended, um, Pam and I both attended today the Franklin County Transportation Planning Organization meeting, or otherwise known as the TPO. Um, this is the organization, um, that sets the, um, five-year transportation improvement plan for the Franklin County region. Um, it's the program that we've worked with to get Conway Street done, North Street. Um, they had an update, um, for their, for the committees on the Route one-twelve, the, uh, sidewalk and bike path, uh, plan. It looks like that is officially in the TPO for, uh, construction in FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-eight, uh, which seems like a long way away, but really in DOT, um, in DOT terms, it's, it's practically next week. Um, so we can look for a public hearing, uh, later, later this summer. Um, the, the public hearing would probably be held here in the town hall. Um, and I guess, uh, residents should just continue to watch the meetings or the website for more information about that, but we'll, we'll get that out, um, as much as possible. But it is, um, it is moving forward, so it's a seven million dollar investment in Route one-twelve that will pu, um, provide sidewalks from one, from the top of north, uh, to the Buckland Rec.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. It's a good project. Um, I've served as the West County District's, um, uh, voting member on the TPO and there was, uh, some conversation today about, um, uh, Pam stepping into that role as a, as the, continue to have a, um, membership leadership role in the, in the TPO from the town of Buckland, which I think has a lot of value, you know, that a lot of money flows into the region through that, um, through that program and having a vote as to how it gets used, I think is pretty useful for Buckland.
Is the sidewalk on both sides or one side of this? Is the sidewalk on both sides or one side of this, the one-twelve?
I have not seen the design. We don't know how, um, Mass DOT's design priorities will be impacted by, um, the federal and state, um, review of, um, bicycle and pedestrian access. There is not quite as much focus on that with this administration as there has been in the past, and I don't know how Mass DOT's designers will be responding to that. It was a conversation that definitely came up as to whether or not, um, double sidewalks are gonna still be a thing.
You're right, right.
Dual bike lanes.
And dual bike lanes.
But the, which is the whole lane, uh, on North Street, I'm saying, I hope bicycles slide over when we go by. We'll see this summer.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's, that's funny.
Well, they ride two, two, two and three abreast all the way to Conway down that road. You have to honk at them to, to go by them, so. And it's not their fault, it's just that you're right, I think they're riding on a little back country road, which they are.
Anything else?
I feel like there was, but I can't, I know, we had a, we had ourselves a day, so anything else that I was gonna present, I'll have to wait till your next meeting.
Perfect.
It's gonna work out okay, Pam, you, you're gonna do, you're right, you're gonna, you're doing a good job, and, uh.
I'm gonna need those pep talks, Larry.
You, I'm, I'm gladly give you a pep talk every day, okay? You still got Heather to bounce things off and, uh, and Kara, too, so you're gonna.
Remember, this was recorded and you asked for that pep talk every day, so. You didn't think that one through.
Do I need to bring pom-poms?
I think we're good.
We're good.
If he does, I am gonna need video.
Public comment?
Oh, yes, please.
Kelsey.
Thank you. You said you've had a day, I didn't expect to be here tonight, so.
Did you have a day, too?
I did, thank you. Okay, so a couple things I wanted to mention, is that is it possible to get a copy of the presentation?
Absolutely, yeah.
And regarding the fall people contract, the big contract, and this is why I'm here, because it's not streaming as, uh,
No.
As mentioned at the.
I'm gonna ask Donnie to come up and speak to that.
Locks meeting tonight.
It's helpful.
I have mentioned this to Heather, but her plate is really full.
No, that's.
I thought I'd take on the task, if you don't mind, to renew the contract and see what your scope of work is, 'cause I think part of your scope of work is to stream on Channel Nine, and it's just not happening. And I think to suggest as a substitute to go to a little tiny screen on a laptop, which I don't do, is not the same as, uh, meeting the requirements of the, of the contract.
They're, they're working on it, I know that, 'cause Donnie's in there to, to the, and he just said the same. Well, a lot of it has to do with Comcast, I think, I believe, even more so than our small group, yes.
I don't think it's fair to want playing Comcast.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not, I'm saying, just, they have a great deal to do with it, because they're, it's, you know, they're.
Yeah.
The contract is the contract, and they're not meeting the scope of the contract.
I understand. I, and we're having regular conversations about it and working to find us a solution. You're not the only person who has reached out with a, with a, with a concern, and, um, hopefully, we'll be able to get it resolved and restore the sound. Uh, my understanding is the video plays just fine, it's just, there's no sound, and that's, yeah.
Yeah.
But once it comes back to replay, there is sound, I believe. When it comes back on for replay, there is sound.
Not on live Channel Nine.
No.
Oh, yeah?
And then on Sunday, and on Saturday, and I think I sent their text, I have done a lot of texting to Heather about this, not asking for a response, just a note to the file. I have a fairly good record of when it hasn't played for months now. I can transcribe that into a written form.
Are there times where there is sound?
Rarely, it was maybe three or maybe four weeks ago, I think I was at a meeting one night, or, and there was a brief period of about a week before there was sound.
Do you think it's my voice? Do you think that they, there's, there's, there's just a pitch to my voice? That people are tired of hearing? Possibly. Possibly.
When Heather's gone, it'll all magically work.
I have a feeling. That might be the case.
Okay, anything else, Lynn?
No, but thank you for always letting me know.
All right, any further public comment? Um, announcements, we have, uh, on the thirty-first, we have Finance Committee. Uh, what time, five-thirty?
No, five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Our next meeting is on the April eighth, um, also at five o'clock.
And, uh, what I, I just remembered what it was that I wanted to share, is that the Planning Board is having their public hearing on the zoning board, on the zoning, um, zoning bylaws, um, which will be on April ninth at six-thirty PM. They are required by Chapter forty-eight, um, to hold a public hearing on any proposed zoning bylaws, or amendments to the zoning bylaws. And that will be on April ninth at six-thirty PM. And we'll get that on the website.
All right, that's it, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and have a good evening.
And Lynn, I'm like you, I wouldn't.